So, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the city of First Park City Council and work session for third day, April 11th at 6:00 PM to order. And do you have, do I hear a motion for adoption of the agenda?
No.
So, move in second, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyways, guys have it. Thank you, council. And tonight we have ordinance 241292 adopting the 2021 International Building Code and other construction related codes. And then we're gonna be following up with that on the traffic camera introduction. We need about, probably about half of the meeting for that or 20 minutes or so. Dr. Calvin is in the house. Please, would you like to come and take a seat wherever, actually?
Oh, there's my whiteboard.
Oh, or, yeah.
I gotta make a table. Yeah, I know there's.
Just remember one of the rules, it's no math on TV.
Welcome. Hi. Um, first, I want to start with. I had some questions from Tracy today about the bill that's been approved by the state. And to clarify that, that the bill is not outlaw on fossil fuels completely yet. What?
That's Tracy.
Yeah, I know, sorry. No, 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 I'm just.
Who's here?
So, sorry, anyhow, and to be clear, this is the first session for the adoption of the 21 codes. So, um, when it does this, the bill says basically that as of right now, we, if we adopt the 21 Washington State Energy Code, it obviously is changing to the degree where builders aren't very happy. Um, it doesn't outlaw gas in kitchens, you know, stoves or fireplaces and decorative appliances, as guys like to call them. Or barbecues. But as a main source of heat, it's over. They're, they're no longer allowed in a single family home. It's only heat pumps. So, that's kind of the gist of the, the House Bill 1589 that I know of right now. It's gonna change in 2025 again, and by 2031, they're saying that they'd like to be rid of fossil fuels altogether. I don't see how that's possible. You know, but they're working towards that. So. Sorry, any?
Questions, colleagues?
I'll dive right into the energy code, because the energy code is the, the part that's really. All the code people I know, we've got a lot of slack, a lot, a lot of crud from the builders because of the expense of how tight the homes are gonna have to be and all the requirements that are happening in the energy code. One of those is the insulation value currently is an R48 insulation. That'll be up to the, the 21 goes to an R60. Now, that's about three times the cost of what it currently is right now. Okay, so imagine you're going from an R48 to an R60 in your ceiling assembly for, just for insulation. Your wall assembly itself is also going from an R21 bat, not only with an R21 bat, but with a perimeter of an R10 ridge and insulation on the whole outside of the house. That for me is more of a design problem, and particularly with flashing and the corners and all of that. So, that's another big expense. Yeah, so you're just looking at the total cost when you add a heat pump and all these other things. You're probably boosting the price of the house, of to build the house about a minimum of about forty thousand. A minimum. You know? So, um. Yeah, oh, please, yeah, go ahead.
Does any other jurisdiction have, I have two questions. Does any other jurisdiction have insulation requirements this intense that you know of?
That what?
That you know of? Does, does California require R60 and the?
Well, it changes throughout the states like Minnesota. You're gonna have a double wall insulation. California pretty much is on the same horses we are. I know that Oregon is in our 21 wall, which is currently required by code in an R48 ceiling.
And then my recollection is the more you insulate, the more you have to have air, certain air ventilation. And so, does that mean that the air ventilation requirements are as well?
It doesn't increase if it's ventilated properly.
Oh, okay.
That's the problem. Yeah, you see that a lot in older homes, homes where they add more insulation and forget that they need to keep that attic or crawl space ventilated.
Right.
So, that's a lot of dry rot problems, things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Colleagues, other questions? Please, okay.
Um, in the current energy code, uh, additions of 150 square feet smaller don't have to totally comply with the Washington State Energy Code. So, that's kind of the gimme. Um, we don't. We really don't get many additions that are 150 square feet or smaller. They're usually second story or larger, so. Um. The one thing I wanted also clarifying the energy code, one of them that went up or down is the, excuse me, the U value on the windows currently. If I remember right, yeah, it's a U20s 26. Can't remember for sure. But anyways, they've dropped that down two degrees, which means the windows are gonna be more expensive and more efficient. So, and along with that, too, the air changes, all your vent fans in your houses, those going worse here, sorry, have dropped two degrees as far as the CFM codes requirements of the vent fans, whole house. For those of you that don't understand what a whole house fan does, it's because we've made our homes so tight energy wise that we need to bring fresh air back into them. And that's the reasoning behind a whole house fan ventilation for that within the home. Um, also kind of a funny one for me is electric outlets now. In a single family home, they all has, have to be gas heated. And all have to have where the wiring's coming through, there all has to have a type of closure that seals that up so no airflow can get in there. Because as it is now, we as inspectors, we have to make sure that that insulation flap when it's cut back is actually tucked back blind, so we don't ever end up with any air and that cabin back there. Anyhow, uh, another one that's kind of weird, exterior lighting on single family homes, new homes. If you have exterior lighting over 300 watts, I'm sorry, 30 watts, you have to have some type of shut off control there within the house, whether it's a sensor, whatever, that will shut them off during the daytime. Within the house, not bathrooms, hallways, or secured areas, but let's say you're, ah, excuse me, living room, bedrooms, I have a lot of those, sorry. Those all will have to have dimmers on them also. So, when you leave the room, the power starts going out. So. Anyhow. Any, any questions so far? I know I'm running through this really quick. Phil gave me five minutes, so. I knew it. I'm gonna be, the EV charging, I know Tracy and I've talked about that a lot. That is a requirement in the 21 code and a subject, it has to be in the house. The 18 code was prepping us for it, so when I go do my inspection of a new single family home for a final, I have to make sure that that EV is there and that the state electrical LNI inspector signed it off also. So. There's a whole lot to that. Along with that, when I'm talking about electrical low voltage smoke detectors and all that, if you have a, a hallway and you have a vaulted area, and then you could have another vaulted area, well, each one of those areas now require smoke detectors at each level. So, you have a hallway here, ceiling here, smoke there, other ceiling, smoke detector here too. And along with that, we all know that, I think it was the last code session or the one before, the CO2 detectors are required, so. Excuse me. Um, the big thing for me, one of them too, is that in the slabs of new homes and in commercial buildings, they used to require six mil visqueen down to stop any of the, one, cold or any water underneath it. You've got to have so much compaction there. It's no longer six mil, it's a 10 mil visqueen that has to go down, and it's lap typically six inches to 12 inches. Sorry. No, I'm fine. No, I'm, I'm okay. Phil, Phil scares me, that's all. Then my little brother over there. I'm sorry. Um, the other thing, a lot of you already knew about this one, between homes and garages, they kind of relaxed the code for the last two code sections with the man door between the garage and the house. Not having the self closer on it, which I always thought was just really ridiculous. They're making us put them back on, and for good reason. You're in a garage, you've got fire, flammable, flammable stuff, all that. When that, when you walk into that house, that door should self close and latch. So, I could tell you in fire rated assemblies, you know, commercial buildings, all of your fire doors in a one hour rated or two hour rated assembly, all those doors have to self close, latch. So, when I had big commercial buildings I used to inspect, I had to walk to every door. They had to. Anyways, uh, had to make sure that all of them latched properly. And if they didn't, they failed inspection big time. So. Any questions so far? I know I'm going fast, I'm sorry. Um. Yeah, I think for me, the biggest thing was, was trying to come up with a way to best explain the energy code, because it's got everybody really scared. And I, for me, I don't see a big deal in it, because we want our houses efficient and all that. So anyways, yeah. Let me move on here through this. Oh, another one. A lot of you guys have homes, I know I did, one of them. Where the hot water tank was located, the garage. Not happening anymore. They're either in the house, or they're gonna have to be high efficiency, high efficiency water heaters. And they're, they're pretty costly, so.
Calvin, is that in the house or in a conditioned space?
In a conditioned space, yeah. I'm sorry. You want them in a conditioned space, not in un.
Yeah.
Does that apply to every type of hot water heater, or like, does it also apply to the tankless water heaters?
Not so much tankless water heaters, because they're high efficiency. So, in that case, no. Okay, but your typical hot water heater you buy from Lowe's? No, can't go in the garage anymore. So, it, a lot of folks, some of the builders are actually putting them in basements, and when you have a basement and all that, then, then you're fine and put it, well, even now, pretty much gonna have to go. I'm sorry, or a high, you know, efficiency hot water tank. So. Uh, I'm trying to stay on the basics the best I can, uh, to make sure. Some of the other stuff, yes.
So, just thinking ahead, so this means that anyone who wants to build an ADU or DADU is going to have to meet these higher standards, because that's our rule is that you have.
Well, it's based on square footage, you know.
Yeah, oh.
However many square feet that, that ADU is gonna be. You know, yes, you have to comply, and typically that's to get the credits you need, you're gonna have to go, we have one going up here real close to City Hall right now.
Yeah.
And, uh, they have to go heat pump, but
Interesting.
R21 walls, right now they're at a 48 ceiling.
Right.
You know, so.
That's, I, that's, I thought the answer was yes, but I just.
Yeah, you could have a small ADU, say, it would be hard to get one under 150 square feet, you can do it, it's 10 to 15.
That's not much.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
But it just means that all our efforts to encourage, uh, DADUs means that the cost of them from here on out is gonna be a lot more.
Yeah, yeah.
Counselor, for a time. So, thanks for your court, and I'm, I'm just wondering, this isn't requiring any kind of requirements, right? These are all new construction.
No, the, the other part of that House Bill, and I'm gonna jump way back in the beginning, that House Bill says that from this point forward through about 2027, that you can replace your gas furnace with one that's equal to or better than. What's that mean? Really? How am I gonna know you have a high efficiency direct vent appliance and you put in a integrated furnace? I don't know what you have there. Or, and I'm just being honest. But the majority of the homes here in Lake Forest Park are, are pretty much all direct vent, they're good furnaces. So, in other words, you can't put in something that's less than. So.
Onto the questions.
Um, another one, uh. I have talked about this before. Egress windows in existing homes, like in basements, where you have a, a, uh, existing bedroom in a basement in a home that was built 50 years ago. Well, for me, it's always been kind of, I've always had to leave it alone, or just go, okay, as long as they don't change anything, they don't have to change that egress. Well, the code says now, if you do anything in that room, you need to, you don't have to change the egress height of the window, but you have to make the window enlarge or so firefighter can get out. Which makes sense. So, in other words, if the wind, the requirement by the code is 44 inches from the finished floor is still height that, and then your opening of the window is 20 by 24, that's always been so firefighter with the back on its back can crawl through there. I've seen him up, one of my homes, the windows were like 50 inches above the finished floor, but they were big windows. So, if I wanted, if I would have wanted to replace those windows, I would have had to put in a wider opening to let a firefighter through. So. Okay. How am I doing? Good, okay, great, yeah.
Especially without the whiteboard.
I thought you liked it.
I do, I do.
Phil laughs at me, hurts my feelings. Next time you come, it's all white.
I want one in here.
I know. Uh, oh. Again, I'm just trying to pick and choose the easiest ones I, I can, because I know the next time around, you guys are gonna really hit me hard, so. Um, another one that's kind of taking for me is like shower heads between homes. God, how many more inspections did it have to add on us inspectors? So, now they want 120 degree maximum shower head in a new single family residence. Hey, what, what am I gonna do?
I thought the valves have to do that.
Shower head is maximum allowed 120.
Angle or temperature?
Temperature. Yeah, 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 that's crazy, okay. Yeah, I've never.
An adjuster.
Yeah. Okay, additions, um. If you put in a DADU that's, you know, say. I'm trying to think, best way to explain it. Any addition requires, right now it's 1.5 credits that you have to come up with, and those credits, I think I walked through you guys last time with the tape, it's, now it's requiring two credits on DADU or detached small building that you're gonna live in. Yeah, that's kind of hard to get to, because the heat pump is one, and you've got to go all these other paths just to get to two, whereas right now it's at 1.5. So, again, the whole energy code is really getting tight, it's getting tighter. Well. All right. You guys, does anybody have much questions on solar panels? They're part of the, are part of the requirements of the code. They're kind of lightening up the restrictions on them now. We still have to have fire department access on the roof assembly. You see 18 inches to three feet from a bridge on the other side. Um, geez, sorry. Yeah. So anyways, yeah, it's a lot there. Yes?
So, um, I think it's great about the solar panels, but is there any, uh, any kind of requirements on the storage matter? Did they change that?
I, I'd have to look it down, but I could definitely likely know that's, that'd be made. Yeah. I don't know much about batteries.
Is it gonna worry about fire? That's, that's.
Yeah.
A junk fire.
Yeah. So. The other thing too is that the, for me, when I do a structural plan or do you want a hall, typically the maximum wind speed here of the state of Washington is 105 miles per hour. That's the maximum that we have here. Used to be 80? It's 80 even times. Something like that.
They were very hopeful back then.
Yeah, and then 2006 happened.
Yeah. They, alright, okay, I talked about the garage doors, they changed the height to consider a story. A story for me has always been, if I've got like, they, a basement typically is defined as 50% of the structure below grade. And then from that point, that becomes the basement. Now, they kind of lighten that up a little bit. Now, they're saying that a story could be defined as 13 foot seven. Well, it's pretty easy to look at all the new homes that we have going up, where each wall is typically nine to 10. So, they're extending the, the height a little bit on what the story is. That won't work really well with our maximum roof heights anyways, 13 feet. So, anyways. How am I doing?
Good, we've got about seven minutes.
Oh, my God.
Pressure.
Oh, God. Um, the other thing too, that a lot of you don't know, is that I have to require a a, a test done by a mechanical guy as far as the heat loss and all that goes in a single family home. So, I have to know exactly, I have to hand it a piece of paper saying it meets the code, here's the numbers, here's the minimum, here's the maximum, and I've got to make sure that that's filed on all new single family homes. And on, on some larger additions and stuff like that. So, I go into the commercial applications, but I know I'd kind of lose some of you, but I, I thought I'd throw some out there just for interest is the, uh, fire rated assemblies where we have all buildings, the twin towers are a good example of that, where the fire the columns in that building were treated properly, it's just they weren't maintained. So, now they're saying you can build nothing, do nothing within three feet of those structures that are fire sprayed and all that stuff. Trying to think of the right word for it. Uh, but that foam insulation that they spray on those columns, that's all part of the fire resistance of that structure itself. When you pull a lot of that off there, you're losing your fire rating on the building. So, you're gonna end up in bending. So, anyways.
Calvin, what about multi-family?
Multi-family.
Are all those requirements the same? Or are they gonna build less energy efficient?
No, no, multi-family is just as tight.
Just as, that's what I would.
It's the same thing. The only thing with multi-family, they're, they're obviously, people think they're cheaper to build, they're really not. Because in multi-family, you have typically a one hour wall between the buildings and ceiling, ceiling assembly. And, geez. So, yeah, they're, they're definitely not any cheaper than single family.
So, all that insulation and window, um, stuff, and, and so, and that's all gonna be consistent.
Yeah, I know someone in here that's over in, uh, the Pulte. Yeah, yeah, the multi-families over there, they, they came out really nice, but those, again, you've got one hour walls, you've got ventilation, you've got to look out for all kinds of things in multi-family buildings, and particularly with the live work too, that are different than the single family home, where you don't have the fire rating other than between the house and the garage.
Okay, thank you.
Colleagues, other questions? Counselor, Riddle?
I apologize if they came up earlier, but, uh, is there any requirement for whole building air leakage test?
There is.
Is that for residential or?
Oh, it's for all, multi-family and commercial, it's, yeah. Yeah, you guys all do know that, I think in Seattle, it's getting rid of gas lately, right, on commercial buildings?
You, you.
On news.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah. So. So, yeah.
Got a couple more minutes, colleagues, going around the corner and see if they have questions for Calvin.
I'll have a lot.
First touch, so.
Yeah, I have a lot more next time to throw out here. I want to get through the energy code, because I get a lot of questions on it, quite a bit, excuse me, quite a bit, plus kind of clarify the House Bill, so.
How many whiteboard workers would you like to sit?
I think, I think Phil will pat me on the back for not using it today.
Please, sir. Yeah, a big picture, any of the changes you described, are any of them discretionary, or are they all required by new state law?
They are required by state law. Now, are there other, do they, uh, do they allow a, what we would call a component approach to, to things? Rarely in a commercial application, you've got to do a complete lighting plan. Multi-families get to that point too. Resident, residential applications. It's pretty tough to come up with a component plan when you're trying to beat the prescriptive requirements of the code. It's, it's pretty, pretty much impossible.
Counselor, legal.
Uh, thank you for the presentation. You mentioned, um, some cities may be banning gas in new structures. Is that actually occurring, or is there any?
On new single family homes, it's, it's done.
Done.
Yeah. It's not allowed in new single family homes. Now, again, the state law will allow you to put in a decorative appliance or a barbecue or even a generator that's run on gas. It's just your main source of heat has to be a heat pump.
So, what about, uh, multi-family?
Same thing.
Not allowed to put in, uh, gas as a primary. What about gas appliances? Such as, uh?
Well, what about gas appliances for me?
Uh, like, uh.
The only ones that you, well, if you have gas, I'm sorry.
So, if you can't put in gas as a primary heat source, can you put in gas?
If you go a gas stove, sorry, I didn't mention that. You go gas stove, you go generator, you go decorative appliance.
Can you go gas water heater?
No.
Colleagues, other question, I guess, because we're, I just wanted to make a comment, which was, I think we all heard about the Berkeley Supreme Court decision, the California Supreme Court decision that essentially. Berkeley Supreme Court decision, the California Supreme Court decision that essentially prevented cities from being able to do this natural gas ban on new constructions in abandoned homes. And what I think is interesting is this is now seeming to be a workaround around that decision. That there's a way to regulate or we do rather legislatively do it. So it's interesting that, uh, we're adopting that, so appreciate that.
Yeah, well, like I said, the codes are really gonna get more refi- refined through the next probably five years. And they're gonna get tighter and tighter trying to get rid of fossil fuels as much as they get. I don't know how you can do that jurisdictions where eighty-five percent of the town is fossil fuel heated. You know, so.
As we are.
Yes, yeah.
Which sort of brings me to the thought, do you anticipate there being a, a barrier to adopting these in people who don't have, uh, enough power source? They don't have a large enough, um, uh, so what I'm talking about, the breakers, yeah. Power panel, I mean, just electric for your water heater, electric for your, you know, this, and then now we've gotta add EVs, you have to reserve that for the EV, and suddenly we're running out of space.
Well, that's part of it, and I know Tracy knows about this one too, is that the more we're draining power, the bigger the grid's gotta get. Think about it, more power. It's not really there yet. Stake on everything, that's something that's gonna happen gradually, like everything else. They're talking about the the, the, the thing I was talking about with the, like, Washington Energy Services for Gas here and Seattle City Light and all that. They don't, they won't get any more builders or anybody will not get any adjustments. You know, to put in gas furnaces, so what are they gonna do? Now, from what I read on in, in the, uh, the house bill that they were talking about trying to somehow get the gas company and the power company to come up with a way to make it easier for everybody to convert from gas to electric. I don't know how that's gonna work. I, I really just want to just have to watch and see.
Thank you, Calvin. We should probably move on, running out of time. We're gonna be touching on this a couple more times at least.
Yes.
So, yeah, appreciate that. Thank you so much for this and, uh, lots of things about everybody. Hope your voice gets better.
I do too.
Take care. It's a lot of apologies, really. Thank you, Danny. Appreciate it. Yeah. Okay, folks, we're pivoting here into, um, let's see, what do we actually have? It's titled, titled as traffic camera introduction. Um, that's sort of for Tony, you want me to introduce this, or would you like to walk us through this, or how, how would you like to proceed?
Uh, since you. Okay, well, I, I'm happy to do it.
Okay, what have you got, and I'll fill in as subject matter, whatever.
So, um, one of the things that, uh, I don't know if everybody got, but basically I got a copy of it, which was literally, um, the, uh, the vendors, uh, down here.
Ver mobility.
Ah, yes, Ver mobility, uh, sent to our police department who reviewed it. Uh, the data from that, and it's in the third paragraph down here, which is literally the two traffic cameras right now that we have that are school zone cameras that are by, uh, Brookside Elementary. Um, the number of citations I think should blend up. I mean, from, uh, two years ago to the last year, which is remarkable. Um, yes, there was an increase in traffic volume as well, but in terms of, um, deterring that kind of behavior, increasing pedestrian safety. I mean, they're doing their best, but of course they're only on during, uh, school hours. So in an effort to try to actually address this issue, um, uh, the proposal is, I'm proposing that we actually make them also speech cameras. So literally they'd be on twenty-four seven enforcing the twenty-five mile an hour, uh, speed limit there. The school zone cameras would still be in effect during school times when the lights are flashing, and that's twenty miles an hour. But the fact is that we've gotta do something about this because, uh, so when eighty-fifth station comes online, when light rail opens, what is that in, uh?
Oh, yeah.
Let me start it.
Oh, my mistake. Yeah, yeah. Yes, I, I'm, I'm guessing as you may be too, that, uh, the amount of traffic that's gonna go down that arterial is gonna increase, and so in an effort to try to nip that in the bud, to keep people basically from just dangerously speaking, it's like, uh, point out here, you know, people are going fifty-six in that zone, which is just crazy. I mean, you know, even if the, you know, it's the curves alone, which should deter that, right? But nevertheless, yeah. We, this is where we are. And you notice that in the recidivism thing, um, we're, we're actually catching new people. Right? It's not like there's a bunch of repeat offenders that we could crack down on those guys. No, it's a bunch of new people, so so clearly we need to do something about that area just to keep it safe for the kids who are walking to school, the people who are walking like dogs, or Tom walks everywhere, you know? This is, this is just basically a common sense. So, uh, the proposal is to literally basically make, uh, and what's nice about this proposal is that it's not gonna cost a huge amount of money since we're gonna be using the existing masks, that's things that, yes, the cameras are not, and, uh, so when they're already powered, right? Um, we're gonna have to put up some signs to indicate that, uh, we're doing this under the auspices of the drag racing statute that we passed, um, a few months ago, right? Last, yes, last July, I believe, the race night. And so, um, the fact is that we are, we, we statute totally have the authority to do this. So I think it's a small step, but I think it will be a meaningful step in increasing pedestrian and multimodal, uh, safety in that area.
Let me, let me throw in a couple other data points. Um, one, you, you all are probably aware that , uh, Administrator Phil and I follow the legislative session very closely on a variety of fronts, including the traffic here in the legislature, and lots of challenges there. One of the things that happened in that legislation inadvertently, I guess, is the, those of you who have been on the council previously, but I'll, um, update the folks that are new to the council. We were previously allocated two at-large speed cameras based upon the size of our community. They didn't have to be in school zones, they didn't have to be in park zones, they'd be in hospital zones, they didn't have to be in, uh, what's the other one? There's one other one, parks, hospitals. Yeah, there's one more. Anyway, um, but inadvertently in that authority, the, the authority of twenty-three eighty-four, the new bill that goes into effect, which supersedes the existing legislation. The authority for the two at-large cameras goes away. So on, uh, if we do not have these in place and active by June fifth, on June sixth, that authority goes away. We will have the ability to do one additional at-large speed camera. Uh, we took a look at opportunities for placement of cameras, um, in other locations, challenges, one. The authority is not there because this is, it was already designated a race zone, and then the numbers just came in literally, uh, it's been less than two weeks ago, about how high the speeds are during this, on this quarter. And as noted by, um, Councilor Frattoni, one point three million vehicles on that, on that road. And the other thing that is also a factor that we're gonna be dealing with down the line is that one forty-fifth street is closed at west of I five. And as a result of that, all of the commercial traffic that has to go to, from basically from one thirtieth street all the way north to two hundred and fifth is coming now through our neighborhoods because they can't get less of I five. So that's an additional thing that we're having to talk about relative to truck routes. This one is, uh, this, this is, I believe is an important, um, I think it's dovetails nicely with, with, um, Ellen's comments during the retreat about a speed camera at fortieth and, uh, one seventy-eighth. Regrettably, we don't have the infrastructure in place to do this. It's a big lift to try to get this in place before our statutory authority expires.
If I may. Um, can we move them later? Can we designate these speed cameras now and then say, okay, but we need to move them further away from this area to get better control? And still be within our statutory regulations?
I am not sure. I doubt it, honestly, because we're, it, it's interesting because let's just say that some, some folks reached out to the State Transportation Commission and asked them whether it was their intent for this authority to go away with the next session. It was, it sounds like it was, so they were caught in the wares. They didn't, they didn't, it may have been a mistake, or it may have been something that threw the if you look at the bill, the bills, the, the versions that went through the House and the Senate, you're talking about dozens of permutations of this. And so it's, I would like to be positive of this, that they, that it was inadvertent. But for our community, it is a unique situation, because other communities have additional opportunities for at-large cameras. As of June sixth, we will have the opportunity for one at-large camera. That means that other than, um, school zones, for walks zones, park, et cetera, which those are basically time deleted. Um, uh, just by the nature of things, our park closes, does, for example, and open it on. So this is, this authority is important for us in terms of, uh, in terms of pedestrian safety and, um, it does allow us, so it's either you choose to do this now, or do we allow the, or not the authority expire? And then we just have one in the future that we go through the study process. Now, having said that, the study process is, uh, it is required a- as of last year to have an equity analysis. We have, we have contracted with an equity firm. I was able to get this, a firm that specializes in equity analysis to get it down within a very, to a very, very low number so that we could move it forward with it in, in an expeditious manner and not have to go through putting it out for bids and things like that. They were very gracious to consider this and, um, as a matter of fact, I'm having a meeting with them and, uh, maybe it's tomorrow or the next day, or on Monday, again, to, to follow up. I think that there are good opportunities here for pedestrian safety. Um, Ms. Pratt, is there anything else you would like to add? I saw you.
I just wanted to, to, Councilmember Riddle's question, um, that I think it would be, we'd have a challenge maybe in diff- in moving these cameras because the equity study and the traffic study has to be specific. So I'm not sure it will let us move them very far at all. If the legislation changes, then that would give us another avenue.
Thank you, Ms. Pratt. Yeah, Deputy Riddle.
Yes, I, um, I've been aware of this, and I just wanted to add a few additional comments. I think the efficiency of this in using the existing, um, structure and the existing cameras is, if, assuming we can get all the logistics down, that is really worth a lot. I do think that this is a big accident and speed location. So I support it from the point of view of traffic safety, and I, I have occasionally used one seventy-eight. Um, but the speeds there are, are, are striking, uh, especially like big construction trucks and stuff like that that are cutting through. Um, so I think from, uh, from, uh, traffic calming, uh, traffic safety point of view, and from an efficiency point of view, I think this would be great. In addition, I think in doing this quickly, we would, we would see the, um, the deterrent effect, but also the revenue effect of this coming in um, fairly soon, which would be helpful.
Councilor Riddle.
Um, yeah, a comment and then two questions. So the comment, I think we really should emphasize the recidivism data. That ninety percent of people who get a, a ticket are not violating again. So that, to me, suggests that the cameras are having an impact on driving behavior, which is really our ultimate goal. So I like that. Uh, budget question, if we change these from school zone cameras to speed cameras, does that change the fraction of the money that we get and what, where the money goes, general fund versus other fund?
That's a great question. So it's basically, think of it as separate cameras. It'd be school zone camera during school zone hours. And then it's going to be traffic safety cameras the rest of, the rest of the period of time. So the, the money allocations that are required, that are required in states, previous state statute on the installations of the, of the school zone cameras, those funds go that direction. And the funds that, under the previous authorization, keep in mind that twenty-three eighty-four has a different system in place. The new, the new, uh, independent authorizations, uh, at-large cameras, consider them at-large cameras, I, I, for better term, can't think of another one. Those revenues would go towards, uh, pedestrian, pedestrian safety and, um, and there's other different, other interpretations too of what they say going forward in the legislation, legislative, uh, legislature. Legislation, apologies, my voice is still with me, but my brain is not. The, um, the, it's a great question, and it's very, it's very challenging. What it will not do by doing this, will not preclude us for adding one additional school zone safety camera and one red light camera, and those revenues can continue to flow into the general fund. Under, we miss any additional general fund specific revenues, because that's what we allocated it for for all the previous years. That authority expired, uh, as of January one. That was written explicitly in the legislation. One of the other things I just wanted to mention too is that, um, with one point three million vehicles logged on this road, I took a look at, and all of us did, took a look at other roads as well. And if you combine this one point three million vehicles logged, the biggest, we looked at the heat map today in our agenda meeting, Deputy Mayor's meeting. The heat map shows the largest incident of traffic, um, collisions at Brookside Boulevard at one seventy-eight. Hands down, it is exponentially, not since exponential, it's much, much larger. I mean, it's like a sun in the middle of our city. Because it's yellow and it's, it's quite alarming, and I'm very hopeful that by doing these kinds of methods, and then those revenues go directly into a safety, um, uh, improvements around our community, we can start encouraging people to slow down and get to the place where the traffic camera revenues are zero. I mean, I know that's aspirational, but I think that that's the goal that we all see. And I really, I really think this is an opportunity for us to make sure things are better. Um, the other thing is the two roads that have the most accidents other than our state routes, which makes sense. State's routes, of course, certainly have accidents because there's huge volumes of traffic. We've got fifty-four million and twenty-six million on the north floor. Um, one seventy-eighth is by far and large consistently, since two thousand and seventeen, the most number of accidents. That's as far back as we can go in the, in the business intelligence data through Ver mobility, uh, and through the state too, and through the PD. One seventy-eight by far has the most accidents. The second one, guess what? Perkins. So it, it illustrates that we have a cut-through challenge on both of those roads. The one eighty-fifth comes online when the light rail station at the Mountain Terrace comes online. And when the, the light rail station comes on in, we're gonna have people coming down from various routes. And right now, we're faced to, as I mentioned, the additional traffic that's occurring because people can't get to I ninety-nine up one to forty-seven. We're, question, more questions. This is the first conversation about this. I want to say very quickly that staff has been fantastic. Phil has been amazing. So, uh, everyone, Jeff has been so helpful in trying to move something forward because we have a deadline. And so I recognize that there are a lot of moving parts for this, and I would, I would be remiss in not thanking Ms. Pratt, as well. She's been twenty-four seven thinking about this. I think about making sure that we, um, are not missing various things.
They're not charging twenty-four seven. Hard to parse, and then it's hard, once you think you know it, it's hard to remember.
Yeah, it is. It is, and so, yeah, please, because we're.
It's just a thought. I know coming, you know, eastbound, south, southeastbound on one seventy-eight, the flashing light is partially blocked by one of the signs when you're kind of up higher and you don't get a good view, but till you get a little closer, yes, people should still be paying attention. But it does kinda, it is odd because we have the flashing crossing uh, zip line, you know, for, for pedestrian crossing, and then we have the flashing small light. And there's a, a sign that's kind of blocking it, and I can imagine that during this addition, if we go forward with it, to kind of revisit those sightlines with, uh, Ver mobility, uh, to make sure that people can see it earlier so that they're more alerted, I think.
Just on that flashing light, it is where it is. It's a requirement, it has to be captured in that photo, and just unfortunately, it's been looked at several times. The judge has looked at it and is fine with it and enforcing that.
I think the sign itself maybe can move. I think that's, that might be the thing to look at, is less the flashing light.
I would just say.
It's a thought for later. And if, if it gets revisited, let's revisit it, I think is all I'm asking.
To some point, Director Perrigo and Chief Arden are all over the sign question, because there's initial signage that we have to think about, um, relative to this. And two, if we choose to, if we go forward with this and all the pieces fall into place, I am encouraging, uh, uh, all of us to consider putting in advance reader boards at both, uh, various places, two places, like at either end of one seventy-eight or not the end, like, you know, certain locations. Saying it's coming. You're duly warned. You you're driving like knuckleheads. It's time to slow down. So and I'll say that. Anybody, I I had a conversation with somebody today and I said, you're welcome to stand on the street corner with me any time of day and I will show you ten people streaming through in five minutes. And during the school zone times, it's terrible. Yeah, you see it all the time while we're on yourself, too. So. But thank you, Council. We need to move upstairs. We're going to be bringing this back again for conversation and understanding that's a very trumpeted time. I. Not trumpeted, accelerated. And we're good. Thank you, guys.